We're on.
Oh, we're on. Okay. Welcome, everyone, to another Select Board meeting, Monday, this July 12th. We'd like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just before we start, I'd like to recognize our Highway Department for working this weekend. We've had a couple of roads that had some damage due to the rain, so thank you to the Highway Department and the police for keeping it safe. So, has everybody looked at the manifests and payroll?
Yeah.
Any questions, concerns, or anything like that? No? Somebody wants to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable for 7/12/2021 and the payroll for 7/13/2021.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor? Unanimous? Minutes from 6/28?
I didn't have any changes. I don't know if anyone else did. No? Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, the meeting minutes, from June 28th, 2021, as written.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor? Unanimous? Reports from assigned boards and committees? Has the budget met yet? No?
No.
No? Okay. So, budget didn't meet? Planning Board?
Planning Board meets on Wednesday.
Wednesday?
A very exciting day.
And 300? 300?
300.
Be here today?
They'll be here tomorrow.
Yep. CIP?
Gone.
Yep. And Marston?
Yeah, so, Marston, the good news is we've got our well out there. We, it didn't start out great. The first day, they went through like 170 feet of, 170 feet? Yards? 170 feet of sand and clay. Didn't hit bedrock. And that day, we had storms that came through and they had to skedaddle out of there quite fast.
Right.
But then fortunately, the next morning, they hit it pretty quickly the next morning. And so, we ended up going down 585 feet. And the interesting thing is that it produces about 60 gallons per minute.
That's great.
Yes.
It's good pressure right there.
Yeah, so it's proficient. It should be, you know, definitely here to what we were thinking in terms of the irrigation. I was talking to Chris about, you know, whether or not there's any, you know, application for the Fire Department, given, you know, that, that volume. So, he's going to talk to Jay about that. Yeah, so, that's all good with the well. I think we ended up going about $2,000 over what we had estimated, which on a well is pretty good.
Yeah.
So, now, Matt Kukouchis is working on, you know, setting up the transformer, building the utility shed to house it and getting everything hooked up, so.
So, with, with the pricing of lumber, have you perceived any overrun on that as far as pricing?
The, the building's going to be a, isn't it going to be a stone? I think it's going to be a stone shed. He was talking to, what's their shade?
Shade, something there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good.
So, all good shape.
Great. Nothing more, Marston?
Nope.
Okay. Town Minister, your report?
Uh, no, I don't have a ton for you. You mentioned last week's weather. I took a tour today with Sean of the damaged roads. Everything's passable. Ledge Farm's going to need more work. We had a situation there where some erosion, took out a culvert. Losing the culvert, put the water in the roadway, eroded underneath the road, so we've got asphalt damage there.
Not in the new section?
Not in the new section.
Okay, okay.
It fell from the new section.
Gotcha.
Highland, Jamsa, Moors, and Beachhead all had significant erosion on the hills there. All passable, but all will need ditch work. And there's culverts in a few places that are going to need work. Everything else seems to have held up okay. Other than the town beach room.
Right.
We lost a culvert in the town beach room.
Yeah.
That's bad open. I think they cut that down really. Everything else seems to have held up okay. We haven't heard reports of anything else. Just about everything else. All the other dirt, you know, the asphalt roads are going to hold up in most situations. All the other gravel roads have held up okay.
How's he going to approach it, Chris? Is he going to kind of like triage, do the worst roads first?
We don't need to do too much detail on that. We've got a contractor working on Jamsa and Moors now doing some roadside clearing to kind of tee up the work that we'll need to get done there. So, we can see what we're doing and open up the campy a little bit, get to, get at the ditches. Ledge Farm is the busiest of those roads, so it'll be the priority.
Yep.
We've got to step carefully on these other ones. The rest of them are all new to us, so we have, we have some research to do before we, you know, do a whole lot of work on where the road's supposed to be and we don't want to be digging. Otherwise, we shouldn't be.
But in terms of this kind of like immediate situation, don't we have a contract grader? We talked about?
Yes. That, yeah, well, our grader's going to rule later this week, depending on weather, as well as the contract grader. We've held off using the contract grader until we got the budget approved.
Yeah.
We're past that now, so I think he's going to rule that later this week too.
Okay.
On gravel roads. So, they're, they're, they held up their chop meal. Everything's going to need, you know, trimmed up.
Great, yeah.
But with this week's weather, I think he's going to hold off until later in the week. It's still too wet.
Yep.
And we have materials in the pit for all this?
We, I, I, we've been, we've been buying more stone material for our gravel roads. You've seen that over the last couple of years. That, we, that doesn't come from our pit. That's, that's coming from Deerfield. I, I think what they do in these, in these crisis situations is they use what they can get their hands on quickly.
Okay.
I, I don't think, I don't think they were hauling from Deerfield this weekend to Deerfield. I think it was more, you know, pan, let's get the roads passable.
Yep.
Throw down when we can, you know, mature. I can give more detail on the plans. But generally, that's where we've been drifting is using that, that larger stone material on our, on our classified ground.
Okay.
Well, I have to say, the, like, the work he's just been doing, like, I'll just use my road as an example, the work he's been doing out there has made a big difference. Like, it, it needs to be graded, but it's not as bad as it would have been in past years.
Yeah, they, they changed their approach on particularly those, those newer classifieds, former emergency line roads.
Yep.
The work and the buildup of material on the sides of the road differently.
Yep.
No, they actually changed the material too, if I recall.
Uh, yeah, that's what they started to use.
Yeah.
Other stuff. But just a different technique, I think is, you know, that's what's really nice. Because now that where there are ditches, the water will run more or less where it's supposed to instead of being held in the travelway, which is what the old berm things would.
I mean, we've got, we've got bumps and holes, but there's no big ditch going across the road.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I guess we just need to ask the residents to be patient while the Highway Department triages these roads and fix the more, you know, high-travelled ones first, but they will eventually get to the, to the other roads. So, just ask all the residents at home to just bear with us and be patient.
Yeah, if something changes, if it isn't passable, we need to know about it.
Yeah.
To our knowledge, everything is passable.
Yeah.
Perhaps a few minutes below the speed limit, but possible. Also, going on this week, the top co-paving from last year's major paving work is scheduled. That's mostly around Nottingham Lake and also Church Street. That could get bumped a little bit on the weather too, depending on how this week goes, but that's scheduled for later.
Yeah. Church Street, I know that, you know, you and I had talked earlier in the season.
Yeah. Yeah, Ben had raised a concern about the intersection at Church and the traffic flow in the aisle in the middle of Church Street.
The 156, then?
Our guys actually moved a sign and the state moved it back before we ever got to this point, so.
Okay.
That's still on radar. Tried, tried something, state apparently didn't like it.
Okay.
So, we were.
Is that something we need to get clearance on through the state?
Well, apparently.
Apparently, okay. Or maybe they thought somebody was.
That's enough apparently.
Okay.
Control thing or something, I don't know. You know, it was a quickie, you know, a quickie attempt at that.
Yeah.
And we talked about striking there too.
Okay.
Also, in Highway, the new loader has been delivered, just in time apparently because the transmission on the old one was starting to act up the pit. So, that is in service and the old one's gone.
Did they take that as a trade-in?
Yeah.
Awesome.
And summer camp's off to a good start. We've got two weeks under our belt, you know, as usual, a little chaos at the beginning, but everything seems to be, other than challenging weather over the last couple of weeks, has been going pretty well. I think that's all I have for you after one day.
Deal.
Nice. Before we just move forward, I, I just wanted to review the, the federal money. I wanted to remind the board that, you know, the suggestion was made not long ago in regards to, you know, a stipend of some sort for town employees during the COVID. Would like to see if we can move on that at some point fairly soon. And then, you know. Action items from last meeting, 300, assessing. Have everybody looked at the, uh, applications?
Yep.
This first one here is, it's one that we had previously voted on.
Yep.
Map 70, Lot 53, we're supposed to review it.
Okay, so we want to wait till last on that one? What do you want to just talk about now?
Well, it was one that was denied previously and I'm assuming they want us to reconsider.
I think, I think we.
Approved it, I think.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the, that the assessment and the recommendation from Avatar itself was on track and it was the right one. I think we, in Era, said approve. So, I think what we need to do is rescind our approval.
I don't think that's the case with this one, but let me double check.
Her letter.
7053?
7053, yeah.
Her letter to the people, that's what it says, that they approved it, or basically approved, but then they found out there was more property. They put them over the 100.
Kelly had prepared the letter that said it was denied.
Gotcha, okay.
And we, lumping everything together.
Right.
Approved it.
Yeah.
So, we should rescind that approval and revote on that.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that the Select Board rescind our previous erroneous approval of the exemption for map 70, Lot 53.
I'll sack out.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor? Unanimous?
Now, I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve, approve the denial of the abatement application for map 70, Lot 53, per Avatar recommendations.
I'm sorry, did you say 78 or 70?
Map 70, Lot 53.
Thank you.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor? Unanimous? Alright. Intent to cut. How about we do the abatement applications? And then we can talk. Any, any concerns, questions in regards to the abatement question, uh, applications?
I didn't have any. They, they looked relatively straightforward.
No? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion on those?
I'll make a motion to the Select Board approve the abatement applications for map 63, Lot 80 and map 70, Lot 99, per Avatar recommendations.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor? Unanimous? Alright. Intent to cut? Any issues, questions, concerns on that?
I'll make a motion to the Select Board approve the intent to cut for map 7, Lot 1N.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor? Unanimous?
And lastly, I'll make a motion to the Select Board approve the timber billing for map 40, Lot 10.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor? Unanimous? Alright. General business, paving bids. Have everybody had an opportunity to look at the paving bids? Okay.
Yep.
I'm not in favor of going with the lowest bidder on, on this, you know, because the, um, I, I feel that a more established company like Pike Industries may be the better way to go and the issues that we've had with the previous contractor on Ledge Farm, I, I didn't feel comfortable with, with that bid. I'd like to hear some input from the rest of the board members if, uh.
Well, do we have a problem with Brock? I mean, they're a big company.
I, I, I don't per se. It's just that the experience that I have dealt with, the lowest bidder tends to be not as good as, say, the middle-of-the-road bids. But it's the will of the board. If they, if that's the decision they want to go with, I'll, I'll support it either way.
Well, is there any input from, um, the guys? I mean, I mean, who do we, who do we use mostly, Chris? Does it change all the time or?
Yeah, we've used, we've, we've used R&amp;D responded this year. We used R&amp;D a few years back. We've used Advance the last couple of years. Advance, I think we've used Advance the last three years.
Yes.
They did Lakeview and they did Cooper Hill. Those are both reconstructions, not, not just overlays.
Yeah.
And so, in, in my time here, I know we used at least those, I don't know if we've used Brock's in my time here, or we had at some point in the past. Brock's is not a small outfit.
No, they're big.
They're bigger than Advance, I'm pretty sure.
Mm-hmm. They're, they're almost as big as Pike, I think. I mean, they get, they get huge.
I don't, I don't know. Pike is the, you know, the big, the big boys, but Pike doesn't often respond to our, our bids because we're just not their scale. This is a bigger job than we typically do because we use, we're using both our, uh, our operating budget loaning, 300,000, and Warren Arco, 300,000, both on overlay projects this year, not reconstruction projects. So, uh, so it's a bigger job, gets more attention, I think. We've got a better response.
So, I'm assuming that Sean isn't making this recommendation just based on price? That, that he's evaluated all of the factors and all things being equal or better than?
Yeah, and this is, this is actually the results of a second round of bidding because he, in going through the initial rounds, he knew some differences in how they were calculating things and how they, you know, maybe there was some stuff that wasn't exactly clear in our first round of bid documents or they interpreted differently, so.
Yep.
He's, he's gone through this. This isn't just simply pick the lowest number. There's, there's more subjectivity to it.
Okay.
And the spec that is used is, leans pretty heavily on the state spec, so the work to be done is pretty well understood by everybody using that state's specs. So, that gives you a little bit more comfort in just trusting the whole number. We were kind of surprised with a couple of these, although, but, you know, we don't understand why these businesses do, why they want to do a certain price. We, there is a subjective element to this, you know, people that Sean's worked with before or, you know, if it was somebody we hadn't worked with before, we test that a little bit before, just grab them a little bit, so.
Yep.
Good.
This one is not treated as just a commodity, grab the lowest price.
Alright.
So, what are you talking about?
Road paving.
Road paving.
Yep.
And then, there are decisions.
You got some pretty good reviews.
Yeah. Okay, I'm satisfied with, with the explanation then.
Do you need a voter just to know?
Yeah, I'd like you to just vote because this is, this is a substantial sum and we typically bring those to you for.
Give us a minute to make the motion, Steve.
So, it's Brock's then? That's, we're, okay.
That's, that's the right issue.
Alright, I'll make a motion to the Select Board accept the paving bid from Brock's for this year's paving work.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor? Unanimous?
We will turn that loose with documents tomorrow and then probably be doing the work in August, so we'll meet earlier this year then.
Good. Alright.
And moving along?
Yeah, well, I'm just looking at that clock. That is certainly wrong.
Yeah, it's still quarter to four.
He's not here.
They were just here a minute ago.
Yeah.
They're, they're probably waiting until seven, but they're.
You want them now or again?
If they want to go early, we can, we can take them now.
Yeah, as long as they're not waiting for somebody else who.
Right.
Expect to be part of it.
So, how was your vacation, Chris?
Excellent. It was 12 days without children for the first time in 18 years.
Wow. Congrats.
Plus, you're still married.
Yeah, we'll see how, you know, things are going to be, you know. I want to sit up there.
Don't, don't, don't be shy there.
Oh, I'm not shy. Trust me on that.
Come on up, sit up the bench.
Steve, are you expecting anybody else?
Probably not.
Why is it a little early?
It is a little early.
It's not early though.
I mean, maybe Bill Garnett.
But.
Joe Welch wanted to be here, but it was a little short notice and he's got some other things going on with the operational, fact cases.
Okay.
Services tomorrow, so.
If you could, just be sure to state your name and all that, just for the record.
Just for the record.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
My name is Steve Welch, 7 Deerfield Road, Chairman of the Nottingham Tricentennial.
Road of Capron, State Road, and I am a member, I'm the Secretary of the 300th Committee.
And a very steady committee member. They're going to do it without you.
Oh, gosh, Steve.
Well. During, uh, Joe, uh, whoop, some of the budgeted amount, list of events, budgeted stuff, all kinds of, I'm going to fall on my head.
So, before we dive into the conversation, I, I just, for the board, want to make sure that we're all aligned around the purpose of this discussion. Right? We're, we're closing in on a deadline here and I think some of the things that we've heard from the committee in the past is some great things that would be ideal and exciting, but I think we've got to have at some point a conversation about the reality of what's possible and, you know, given budgets and given, you know, the implications for the fire safety, Police Department, Fire Department.
Yes.
So, you know, I, I think that this discussion tonight has to be about what's the priority for what we do and, and then at least start to have the discussion about how is it going to be executed? Right? Because everything that's being planned can't be done by these two great people.
Right.
So.
Because we had that conversation very early on, probably one of our first meeting, is who's going to pay for?
Exactly. So, we've got to come.
Place in.
We've got to come from down to here. Okay?
Yep. And like I told you, if it's coming out of my budget, then I need to escalate the amount of money I'm asking for the town. I was insured that that was part of the town expense and that they're going to pick up that.
Well, therein lies the conversation, Steve.
Yes.
I understand.
Yes. Alright, so.
So, Fire Department, fully on board, don't expect to be reimbursed. Actually, are excited to be part of it. It all by his.
So, how, how involved are they in regards to? I mean, I, I was there the day that you guys were discussing fires and all that other stuff, so I'm just.
Jay's been pretty involved as of lately.
Okay.
Been to every meeting. Actually, we've been holding him at the Firehouse.
Alright.
Talked to him today. Still very involved. Fire Department's very enthused. I know Fawn was concerned about ambulance. Jay said as long as he's in charge of it, that the town of Nottingham would be covering it. That he didn't.
Be covering what?
Ambulance duties. He'd be at the events.
So.
So, not to worry about an expense on coverage for the few events that we need them for.
My, my concern is if the ambulance is at the event, you know, is it, is it going to be just for the event or do we have to have? I'm worried about the coverage of the town.
Right. Like he said, that's why we have mutual aid.
Okay.
So, it's not a problem. Anybody that's familiar with, with that, we get coverage from numerous towns, so if something happens, they need it, they got it.
Okay.
So, here are a few of the things that I say you're concerned about firing police. So, we might need some presence at the Charter Day reading. We're going to have the Charter Day reading on, do you have the date right there?
May 20th?
Charter Day looks like you're here is May 15th on a Sunday.
Yeah, it's on a Sunday afternoon. May 15th, yeah. And we're going to have the Nevers Band there. The Nevers Band played at the original dedication of the monument up to the square. So, we thought it was fitting that they play for our 300th. So, we'll have a, a reading of our charter. We're hoping to have maybe somebody from a British kind of background, maybe a reenactor to read the charter, seeing it was given by the British to us, so. So, we'll do that and after that, we'll have a, the Nevers Band will perform a concert. So, we might need a police detail to monitor traffic. I don't think it'll be a big deal because Parkin's a little bit of an issue.
Where is that going to be? Here?
Right at the, right at the schoolhouse up at the square.
Do you want to walk through these as line items from January and then go through?
That might be better, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we're not bouncing everywhere?
Yeah.
Like, starting off, where's the bonfire going to be held in the winter?
So, bonfire, I mean, I haven't coordinated entirely with Jay. He's thinking the town pit. I'm thinking out here where we always had our bonfire. I don't know if any of you were around when we used to have bonfires and the firemen had their carnival bonfire slash fireworks. But we always did it out here.
This is in January, okay.
In the corner. Reason I like it here, we have access to the building. If we want to do some kind of open ceremonies, we got power. We got access to some, some toilets here. Maybe a little bit of warmth if it's a cold day. But I'm not opposed to the town pit. Although, I don't know that we got power down there, do we? Is there some kind of power?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the drop is, but there's got to be something there. We have lights, so we have power.
Okay. So, I mean, we could do it down there. So, again, I don't think we need much of a police presence.
Would that be during the day or would that be at night or would be? When would that be?
At night, you wouldn't do a bonfire during the day.
Obviously, but there's no lights at the town pit to bring people in. You'll have to bring in lights.
Right, that's.
But here, you got all the outside lights.
That's why I would prefer.
Steve, what kind of bonfire are we talking about?
Well, I.
Our chiefs in charge, the Fire Department is running it.
Because I'm sure that if we're going to do one like Kingston, there's permits and all that other stuff.
That's what I'd love.
Yeah, but let's.
Say it for me that that's not going to happen.
All right.
But wouldn't that be great?
Yes, but unfortunate signs of the times prevent us from doing that, so.
Oh, it does.
Go forward, go forward. Got to think of safety.
So just, so either here or at the.
Town pit.
Town pit. There's going to be music, the Nevers Band?
No, no.
I'm sorry, that's.
I just thought.
Oh, okay.
It would be nice to do something other than just a bonfire.
Okay.
I mean, something for the kids, hot chocolate, roast some marshmallows, maybe some kind of a being to amusement, it'd be beautiful, it'd be awesome if Courtney could get the skating rinks done by then, I know she keeps talking, she would like to do a skating rink out here.
So I do see two questions with that, one is the parking. Right, and then the other is, there's going to be some impact on the police, there just is, and so that's going to run into potential costs, right?
To be honest with you, I think the duty person could easily cover that.
The duty is responsible for the entire town, I would not want an officer tailored just for the event. All right, if you think you need an officer, I mean, the board will have to discuss it.
Right.
But I would rather have the duty unit patrol the town. Obviously, if there's an emergency, they've got to respond anyway, but I don't want it just to be tailored, because it's taking away from the rest of the town.
You wouldn't want that.
All right, okay. Just make sure we're on the same page.
But, I don't see where there's a huge need for detail, but that's, again, that's.
Okay.
Not my call, that would be Fawn's call. Should I say?
The only thing I'll throw out there is if we have other people in other parts of town who are holding events, and we're holding them to have, you know, fire and police presence and protection, then we should.
I know where you're going with that, yes, I agree.
That's.
However, there's a huge difference. This is a town sanctioned event, the others are not town sanctioned events.
I get that, but we're holding, you know, events requiring details and what have you, this should really be the same mindset. If anything, for traffic control, should there be a lot of traffic? Granted, it isn't winter, who knows what it's going to bring, but.
Right. But I think there's enough parking in this lot, and over the highway garage, I think there's plenty of parking for what the events are.
Now we're going to have people walking across the highway in the winter, ice, snow, all that.
Mm-hmm.
Now, okay.
Hey, Steve, how many hours do you anticipate that to be, are you envisioning it like a two-hour event or?
I would think so, no more than three of four at the very tops.
And probably touch off just as it gets dark.
Yeah.
About four, five o'clock?
It does get dark early.
Yeah, four o'clock, five, four thirty in January, right?
Right, right, but there would be, so out at the town pit, there wouldn't be any facilities?
No.
No restroom facilities?
No, so we'd have to rent potty potties and all that other stuff.
Restructured.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess the question is, do we have it here at the pit? Sounds like it would be here, but I have some reservations about that.
What are your reservations? Let's hear them.
Well, it is winter, so I guess it's not that much, it's not like it's going to be done in the summer, we lose half the forest out there.
And if we got a Fire Department that's running it, I don't think we have to worry about that.
Why would we go on?
Yep.
So, on January one, I get to start growing a beard?
Absolutely. I would love that.
Good work on that.
Right, a couple of long stragglers. But yeah, you know, that's just stupid fun stuff, hopefully I don't need police participation in a beard growing contest, but, you know, beard, mustache, pork chops, all of that good stuff.
How does that get, how does that get organized?
Um, I think we just throw it out there and have people come in, naturally you have to be clean shaven on, on the first of the year, I mean, we could do it in conjunction with the bonfire, maybe.
Hmm, it's going to be dark.
Yeah, it's going to be dark, but, yeah, I mean, I'm not going to go because I'm not, I'm not going to shave. I haven't shaved for thirty years now, so I don't think I'm going to start, but, but it might be something, I mean, if people jump on board, then they jump on board. I think that this event needs to be fun.
Mm-hmm, yep.
I think we need people to start saying, how do I make it happen, not, can you make it happen? I hate naysayers, I don't want people to say negative things, I want people to say, how can I make it successful? Need people to jump on board and make it happen. So, moving on. I know, Tyler, you talked about a basketball tournament, I don't know if we're still on for that?
Yep.
But we talked about doing that in February.
And Tyler, that would be at the school?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything's going to be taking place on weekends, right?
Yeah, for the most part, yes.
So, is that a time of year where, and again, I'm not, I'm not being a nasty.
No, I know, you're good.
Is that a time of year where there would be, where they would be playing basketball?
Well, what we target is, and what we used to do is we'd take the kids that wanted to continue playing in Nottingham, and we hosted a couple of them, you know, so you had two teams from Nottingham, two from Fremont, you know, it's like direct basketball, it's not like the AAU and all that.
Just kids that want to continue playing.
Yeah.
And then we had a boys' and a girls' tournament, we did twice actually, and it was pretty successful, you know?
And is there any additional cost related to that?
Oh, the teams pay an entry fee and it covered everybody, it covered the cost of the referees and they had a little big sale out front while it was going on, and it really worked out well.
Right, so they could actually generate a little bit of revenue.
Yeah.
So then we had the Conservation Committee.
And they're not a maybe, they've said yes, they will do the.
Yep. Family hike, hopefully we have snow and it can be a snowshoe and hike.
Will that be around here or back? Are we going to try to, where are you going to try to, like, what's, would it be easier to focus most of the events in a central location always?
No. Of course not.
Explore the town and.
We want to showcase the whole town, we don't want to showcase this, not that there's anything wrong with this, but we've got a huge town out here. So let's showcase it, let's celebrate what we have, let's celebrate our resources, let's, who hasn't hiked Pawtucket Way Mountain, who hasn't been to Bolt Field, who hasn't been anyplace? So let's, not force them, but gently nudge people to appreciate what we have for natural resources. Nottingham's a great community, Nottingham has a lot of great resources, it's a great place to live, a great place to play, let's highlight that.
So where were you thinking of having that?
That's up to, the Conservation Commission was going to take charge of that, I would assume on some of their property, but.
Yeah, Mulligan would be great.
I would also assume that it depends on the weather conditions, what they choose.
Right. In lousy weather, it might be here, but again, something that's.
So depending on where it is, parking could be a consideration as well.
I'm not expecting like, if fifteen people showed up or twenty people showed up for a hike, I don't think it would be.
I can't imagine it'd be, I hope I'm wrong.
But.
I hope the day comes and it's like, oh my God.
Well, they could always hike over around the school and that land over there.
Oh, absolutely, there's plenty of places we could hike where parking wouldn't be an issue.
They park, they plow the driveway.
Yeah, you could park up the.
Hike in the park.
Yeah, be a little bit of a hill climb back up afterwards, but. But, any other questions on that?
Nope.
Valentine's dance?
That's the recreation that always does that?
Yeah.
So that's a.
They haven't been doing it anymore.
Okay.
Yep. Scratch that.
Scratch that off. So no dance? Not unless somebody wants to pick it up, you guys? One once, one twice? Come on. Come on, what are you guys sponsoring now, you guys got to sponsor something.
We'll come back to that.
Okay.
We'll sponsor town meeting.
Yeah.
Well, we do have that on the list.
Yes, March, yeah, anybody.
So actually, that's coming right up.
Yep, and anybody who's interested in a role in it, I don't know if any of you got a chance to see it when we put it on, oh gosh, maybe that was ten years ago, which was when the big flood was that next year, because we had to cancel it.
But our thoughts are, we don't have a town meeting anymore.
Do you look for a mock one?
Yeah, this is a, Becky Rule wrote the play.
Oh.
So it's a.
Are those two separate things, the Pi Social and Becky Rule?
Yes, those are two separate things.
So the Pi Social, the Historic Society always does the Pi Social?
Yeah.
Yeah. The town meeting play, I'm hoping to get the friends of the library to, the library was who did it before, and I'm hoping to get the friends, and what we did is we had, some of the policemen were in it, we had people from the different departments in it, it's not something that you have to, we just do a reading of the play and sort of get different people to be involved in it. We actually, do we do it twice, we had two, originally we sold out for two things, we do it in the Old Town Hall, provided that's available.
Mm-hmm.
Implications of doing it in the Old Town Hall?
Had to be done on the first floor, it's up the code now, isn't it?
Just if you have first floor.
Because the bathrooms aren't working.
Yeah, you can't even use the bathroom.
The bathroom's a tough.
Do what?
Can't use the bathroom over there.
Power the bathroom?
Yeah.
That's not going to be functional by next March?
Yeah, I mean, we can.
We can only discuss.
I mean, it seems like a shame for the anniversary of the town that the town hall wouldn't be available.
Will, will.
Because that's a pretty historic part of the town.
If we had to, we could move it to the school, but.
Oh, no, it's not going to do it in the school. It loses its whole flavor of being a town meeting, I don't know.
It's not a solid, no, we'll leave it at that, okay?
We'll see on that one.
Yeah, just, one clarification, we do still have deliberative session in March.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's just.
Yeah, we're not going to conflict with that.
No.
But it'd be nice to have a little bit of fun at all of our expenses of, how comical sometimes town meetings can be.
Is this like a roasting play, is that what this is?
Kind of.
Okay.
It's, um.
That might actually be fun.
Why?
Um, when we put it on before, we tried to do it before the actual town meeting, just to put everybody in the mood for a town meeting.
Sharpen their skills.
Right.
Give them some ideas, you know?
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussions on that? So then we go into April, so we've got a mark as a Patriots Day mini march, it's more of an alarm march to celebrate our march to Medford. So, I thought we were meeting up at the square, we'll have some reenactors there to actually parade as they would have in the day, and then we'll have a rider come up on a horse to give the alarm that the attack has been happening, the shots were fired and they needed reinforcements. So, they'll gather around, we talked like we might have some toy guns for some of the kids that want to march with us, and we would march from the square down to Porfarm Road.
Down Ledge Farm.
Down Ledge Farm Road, yeah. Where would we park cars? So, we can do like we always do, we can park one side of the road, as we've done for numerous events, we can park down here, we can park at the school. I've been in contact with Dale Transportation about having them at some of these events, transport people from different parking areas to wherever the event's going to be, and hopefully we can get local bus drivers who live in town to donate their time, so hopefully we can get this done at near zero cost, so.
Yeah, pretty much the square, I think we figured they'll park down here and be bussed up to the square for events.
Right.
Because obviously there is minimal parking at the square.
I mean, we could even, with your approval, we could use a rec van, I don't know what the rec van does at that time of year, besides sit over in the garage.
So that's one that would definitely require police support.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yes.
Not a lot, but it needs support.
Yep.
Once they sat much and will need to, I don't know that we need to close the road, but they'll probably have to have an escort to keep people from running people over, I think there's enough room so you could have one-way type of traffic.
Yeah, you can't have people marking, marching down one side and cars coming up the other side. So it was going, you said the square to where on Ledge Farm Road?
Porfarm. Down Ledge Farm to Porfarm.
Oh, Ledge Farm to Porfarm, got it.
Yeah. And how long it takes you to walk that?
Then you turn around and walk back up, or do you get a ride?
Well, I'd say the.
From there back to your car?
Yeah, I think I would have the bus pick them up there and bring them back.
Bring them back to your car.
Yeah, because then it wouldn't have to leave the road closed for that long, it'd be a short closure.
You might think about going the other direction, because there's lots of spillover down there by the town gate, Flotter Street, it may be easier to do that operation, or you could just walk back to your car, walk down to your field to flutter and then press over here.
Yeah.
We're trying to authenticate, it's supposed to be authentic, like, that's how they would have headed.
That's the direction they would have headed?
Yeah.
I would have liked that, a march all the way to Medford personally.
Yeah.
They did, you lead that one.
Yeah, as a relight.
They did, there's a group of people did it for the.
Two hundred and fiftieth in nineteen seventy-two.
Yeah.
They did walk all the way from Nottingham to Medford, they did make it, very few of them made it, their feet hurt like hell, and they got done and they said they soaked their feet for days before they felt normal again, but.
We just saw this as an opportunity, the idea of the mini marches for the kids to have a sense of what it was like, for these people to.
It's an educational experience for these kids.
You know, that they did this march and just to give them a little taste of what that would be like.
What life would have been like.
Now will you be working with the school for these events to attract the kids to come?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And we're trying to get them to teach, really concentrate on Nottingham history that year.
Yeah, we've had some interest from some, a couple of the teachers, so.
Well, just like announcements at the school or whatever like that, pamphlets at schools so kids know, parents know.
Personally, I'd like to see assemblies done, people come in and talk about what it might have been like in the seventeen hundreds, or, I mean, we don't have to concentrate on seventeen hundreds, but talk about what life was in the day. Make these kids realize, I mean, I think some of them do, but reinforce our history, not only of our small town, but of our nation. You could touch on the Civil War, could have somebody come in as Abe Lincoln and talk about the slavery movement.
Have you considered meeting with the curriculum director up there?
We haven't yet, I've talked to the principal and.
Yeah.
Allison, Fran Gray's, I've talked with her some as well, and actually, I was just thinking, since you brought it up, that summer's probably a good time to try and catch a couple of these people and talk about it now.
Right. New Hampshire Humanities has some great programs out there, and they're next to nothing.
Right.
The problem is, every group can only host, I think two is the guidelines before, and if it's just speakers, it's like a hundred bucks, maybe a couple hundred dollars, come down and do a, do a topic. I mean, if you've got some musical groups, it might cost a little bit more, but not a lot of money.
So for the, so again, for the mini march, reenactment, what's the cost going to be for that?
Talking with Bob Davidson, who's in charge of the First New Hampshire Militia, he's thinking they won't judge us anything to come.
You're not going to have the whole gang, right?
I don't know who will show up for that group, I mean, if there's, I'd be happy with a half a dozen, if there was twenty guys, it'd be fantastic. They are. They are, after visiting Romes Field, they are excited to be in Nottingham. They loved the location. They loved the idea of us celebrating our, our heritage. And he really thought that they were going to show up for the, for the mini-march. If not, Dale said his group would definitely were coming anyways. You know what? If I got to throw somebody a couple hundred bucks, what's a couple hundred dollars?
I'm hearing a couple, couple hundred dollars here and there.
Well, yeah, you do, but, I mean, we got...
Oh, I know, I know.
We've raised fifty thousand. The town has emphasized, if they didn't want to give us that money and they didn't want to celebrate, they wouldn't have supported it. It's been unanimously supported.
Yep.
So we need to spend, well, we don't need to do anything.
But we would like to.
But we would like to, we want to, we expect to. We, through our efforts, have raised over ten thousand dollars ourselves and hope to raise more. So, I mean, yes, I know I keep saying we might have to spend a couple hundred bucks, a couple hundred bucks, a couple hundred bucks. But how many couple hundred bucks does it take to spend? I know.
We'll sell more T-shirts, right?
We'll sell more T-shirts. Sure. So, keep going. Easter egg hunt, Rick already does it.
Yeah, go on.
Um, we talked about charter day. Do we want to hit that again?
So, yeah, let's walk through that again.
Okay.
So that's when the, the charter's being read up in the town square.
Charter here in town square, yep. Again, we'll have the bus.
Yep.
We'll transport. I mean, I think we've got enough parking between the school and this parking lot. There's more than ample parking. Kind of a direct route anyway, so it's not like, it's a huge...
And the band is how much? The sheet here says two thousand on one side and three thousand on the other side.
That's...
I don't know, Joe's on that.
Yeah, Joe and Bill are on that committee. I think as we go through, we'll find that figure later on in this packet.
Yeah, no, I was looking at it. It's, uh...
A thousand, it says, oh, no.
Yeah, I was just, there's a, oh, two, two thousand eighteen budget and then budget. I was just looking at the left column, which said two thousand, and then the right that said three thousand. That's all.
Yeah, I know that there was a, a little bit of up cost to it because they are out of their season to perform. So there's a little bit of an up cost. They come in with, and I think it's crazy not to have it. They just bought a trailer. So they got their own stage or own P.A. system so they can, they can roll that trailer and pack it in the, um, school parking lot, pops up. It's got a cover. So if it's a misty day, they're, they're out of the rain.
Yeah.
Um, personally, I think if it's a rainy day, we, we need to move it to someplace where we can all be inside, whether it's the school or where it may be. Naturally, we've got to get the okay through the school to, as a backup plan, but... I can't imagine that's a big problem. Maybe it is. Maybe I'm being just optimistic, but...
I thought they talked to somebody about that, but I might be wrong.
So of course, they thought we should probably have a tent, but I don't think that's necessary personally. I think if it's bad weather, I think I'd just move it, but...
Yeah, I thought, originally, they had talked about having the...
And the flag display?
The flags are up.
Oh, so that, so that three thousand dollars, that's already been spent on the flags?
No.
Oh, which flag display is this?
Well, we didn't spend three thousand dollars on flags.
No.
Three thousand dollars was for the Nevis Band, I believe. And for that whole celebration.
Yeah.
I was just looking on the, the budget sheet.
Yeah, I don't know what he's talking of. Flag display, I think the flag display...
Well, that's from, yeah, well, that's kind of part of what's...
I think those are the flags that we hung up at the square already.
Right.
Okay.
And most of those were sponsored by local citizens. We did have to spend money out of our budget for the hangers and poles.
Yeah, but all the, uh, flags were sponsored. In fact, we have more sponsors. I, we're thinking that maybe it'd be nice to put flags from flyers down to the town offices. The idea of getting sort of the evolution of the American flag with the original Betsy Ross and then sort of going through the years. So the flag guy said it's hard to get those historic flags right now. The manufacturers aren't making them. But I'm waiting to hear from him. But otherwise, we might just have a roll of Ameri-, you know, the American flags, I think would look nice.
Right, a Betsy Ross flag. Well, if you do those, you can use them every single year for Fourth of July and the week, so it's like...
Yeah, we've got some, um...
Right. It's a good expense to, at least useful for years to come.
Mm-hmm. And those are thoughts even with the flags at the square.
Yep.
Use them until they are unusable. And if somebody wants to sponsor a new one, then, like Gary, sponsor a new one. We'll fly it again.
He's got in there for me. He's got a bunch of stuff for me, not unlike that.
So...
Hey, Steve, one question.
Go ahead.
So you've got like a lot of, um, a lot of things listed here, which is... I mean, the cool part of it is that there's a lot of stuff that happens anyway.
Right.
So how, how do you envision, like, carrying the theme and the, and the story through all of those events that go on anyway?
So I think, I mean, you're not going to do anything with an Easter egg hunt. An Easter egg hunt's going to be an Easter egg hunt unless we... I mean, you could possibly do an heirloom Easter egg decorating contest.
They could use real eggs. That would be heirloom.
So, no, so I was just trying to understand, like...
I don't know.
So those are just events as always, not necessarily specific to this?
Right. But we wanted to, you know, maybe highlight them, maybe make them a little better. I mean, it's like the fish and derby. We have a fish and derby every, every May. The kids just go down to them, catch their fish, and they go home. So why not do a casting competition? How far can you cast? Have an accuracy. Cast into that kiddie pool. And get the local Northern Bass and Kittery Trading Post donate fishing poles, donate lures, donate... So no extra cost on anybody's portion. I mean, I might have to go buy a little kiddie pool, or you could even just use hula hoops or anything. The cast into it, but why not make it fun? Have a reason for them to stick around. So again, no cost associated with it. No big, um, parking issues there because they park... I mean, it's just an ongoing event. We never do anything special.
More like, you know, you have the kids out there looking for the Easter eggs, and if they didn't get what they wanted, like a candy bar, there's a three-hundredth. Nice candy bar for ten bucks. I mean, not, you know, something like that. I mean, I mean, the booth, you guys probably want to have somebody either selling shirts or hats or something, and all these things, right?
Absolutely. I mean, it's just another money-making avenue. Whatever we can come up with for more, give people something. And I had that little Nottingham pennant, which nineteen seventy-two was only, you know, yay big, but...
There's one over the town hall.
Oh, I found a whole stash of them. Brand new-looking.
Right.
In a bag over at the Historical Society.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there's about... Yeah, I'm wondering if we can kind of change the date on them or something.
Right.
Is there a route in which the cruise night would take?
That's all win.
Okay.
Part of his... Cruise.
Historical housing and garden tour.
The Historical Society's going to take on that.
Okay.
So is, is, I see cruise night here again. Is that something that he's going to do every cruise night? Just take a cruise through town, or?
No, I think the idea was, and I don't know, Steve, Steve Soref has been talking to win on that.
He has never done it before. And this is an inauguration.
Well, three-hundredth only happens once.
The first night of the season, that cruise night, will be dedicated to the three-hundredth.
All right.
Following that night, we also going to have this cruise, cruise around town. Also in your guidebook.
Okay.
Nice.
So it's kind of a neat idea.
Yes.
And again, we remind you, there's no cost for the town for that. It's just a new event.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the cruise nights just through the summers, just same as always.
All right.
Um, Women's Club Tea.
They're sponsoring that. They're putting on the whole thing. That's what they chose to do.
Okay. Any idea where, when, how?
I have the date. They gave us a date.
So I talked to the fire department. In June, they also want to do a strawberry shortcake night.
Oh, fire department's going to do that?
Fire department's going to cover that.
Nice.
They're going to limit it to probably three hundred, first three hundred people. So they were on board with strawberry shortcakes. I'm assuming at the firehouse.
And the senior picnic is something that Courtney's doing anyway.
Yep. Boat parade happens every year at Potawatomi Lake.
Yeah, we were hoping they might do a theme about...
I think there's where a theme would come in great to...
We're trying to emphasize...
George Washington outfit. I've never been to that. No. I always watch.
So you're thinking of a obstacle course, do with the boats?
No.
Solomeration kind of?
No, no. Would you like what you bet?
Fine. You know, I... Off subject, well, no, we'll stay on subject.
Keep going.
Um, boat parade, Declaration of Independence. It was always done at Demmon's Store. Um, they have lost interest in doing it.
Um, and I've talked, we thought it'd be nice to have something in West Nottingham. And I've talked to, um, the minister over at the, uh...
First Baptist?
Free Will Baptist.
Free Will Baptist, is that what it is?
And, um, this year, Fourth of July fell on a Sunday, so they didn't want to host it on Sunday because they had their own plans. But, um, we definitely seemed to be interested in doing it, um, for next year. And we're hoping that, um, the hall there, Freeman Hall, is very, um, historical rural town. We're hoping that he'll, that they'll open it up and people can... I've never been in it.
I've never been in it.
Steve hasn't even been in it.
I mean, when have you ever been in it?
He lived in the wrong end of the town. So, um, it just seemed like that would be a nice thing. And Reverend Killingsworth seemed, you know, open to that idea. And I should probably remind him.
A whole lot better parking than at Demmons.
Right.
I never went down to Demmons either, unfortunately. I was hoping to get there.
I usually ride my bike because I didn't want to have to park.
Right. But I can't imagine that being a huge issue. I mean, did we have police detail at Demmons usually?
Yes.
Was there a police detail?
Was there. Wasn't back in the day.
In fact, I sold a T-shirt that night.
Okay. Did that pay for the police detail? Hopefully.
I mean, I think pretty much anything that's going to have parking or gathering is going to have to have police detail.
I think so.
Yeah.
So when we get to budget season, we've got to remember that.
Mm-hmm.
Throw in a little, actually, to cover these details. Assuming one officer per event minimum.
So then we'll move on to the old-time baseball game. I've contacted N.Y.A.A. Hopefully, they could sponsor. There's, well, you can talk about that. You've been to some of those games.
I have.
Haven't you over at Boatsman?
Yeah, I have. Um, they're, they, um, come and they play by the, they're different rules based on the time period. So they, there's some, um, time periods where they didn't use mitts, and then there are others where the ball has to bounce before. There are all different kinds of rules.
They had that on Chronicle last week.
Oh, did they have it on Chronicle? Yeah, they do. Usually, they do a nice job explaining the differences, letting the kids play a little bit of it, and then doing a demonstration game. It's a pretty cool thing, and we thought it'd be a nice thing. Hope, I don't know, about Marston Field.
It's a very expensive proposition. I talked to the gentleman out of Maine. He wanted to host it. I said, how much you charge? He said, well, we get seventy-five dollars, come out and play for the day. And we give the other team fifty dollars. So why don't we give you both seventy-five dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars? But we'll do it for as little as a hundred and twenty-five. He's excited to come down and do it. Said, I'll, I'll play any team you want. I'll bring another team. If you want to jump in and play a game, we'll play a game. If you want to do it on a baseball field, we'll do it on a baseball field. We'd rather do it in just a field because it'd be more authentic. He says, we don't play with no gloves. We're, we're bare-handing, and the balls are much softer. And, and like Rota says, it's a fly ball. You let it hit the ground, you catch it on a bounce, and it's an out. And, and they just, you know, get them out.
So maybe the soccer field at the school?
How about Marston?
What?
Marston.
Yeah, well, I was thinking Marston, if the grass is, uh...
Well, it's a whole, it's a whole year away.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So, but they're excited to come out and play, so...
And that was our idea, would be a nice thing for Marston, to have an event out there.
Yep, yep.
Again, showcase what we got in town. I mean, great stuff. So talking with, um, they thought they'd pick up the bill on it, but it's not... It's not earth-shattering. We're getting into earth-shattering events coming up. So then we move into a parade. Talk about earth-shattering. So parade. I've been in contact with the D.O.T. They have no problem with us shutting down one fifty-two. For however long we want to shut it down. So my thoughts are, and here's in green ink, to detour traffic down Guile Road. We'll have to break out a grader. Make sure the road's graded before that day. I think that's within our, our capabilities, though. So I'll need probably two digital signs, which I'd requested on, or maybe you guys might have access to somebody that has digital signs. When we closed off Ledge Farm, did we rent those signs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Over in Candia?
Uh, it's closer than that. They're not hard to find.
Okay.
What, what's the, what's the, what's the parade? Like, what, what do you, what's in the parade?
So everybody thinks a parade should be free. Nobody comes to a parade for free. Hounds people come to the parade for free. But to do a good parade, you need some bands. You need some entertainment groups. So I've contacted pfeif and drum, two pfeif and drum groups. Both excited to come and play with us. Contacted New Hampshire Police, pipe and drums, so bagpipes and drums. Love to come. State police, no charge, love to come.
This is like a real parade.
This is gonna be a parade.
Right, okay.
It's gonna be a parade.
Yeah. So check with the National Guard, see if they can...
I've been into contact with National Guard.
Check with Thompson, 'cause he's a brigade commander, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
They'll send a, you know, a HIMARS truck, a medium hourter.
Right.
A lot of Humvees.
They're happy to support us. Where's the parade route? So the parade route would, personal opinion, Guile Road and McCrelus. And then we'll dis back, go down to McCrelus, and they can kind of dis and back from there. So we'll get them off that state road at that point.
Where do you start, Chris?
Guile Road.
Guile Road?
Yeah. The McCrelus. So now, they need to check in a little bit early. So my initial thoughts were, kind of line them up on, then come in Guile Road. Get them kinda lined up, motorized units, we could have them pack at the firehouse and the school, or over to Fernwood Lumber, even. And then as we get close to start off time, to move them all down, close off, so they'd actually be lined up on 152. Close off the road, well, 'cause Guile Road has to be the access road around.
Right.
So that's why they're moving out.
So once we move everybody forward, we can, everybody will be out of Guile Road, now Guile Road becomes a three-way. But not until we move everybody.
So, Steve, what's the, so what, if, like, I think it's a great that all these groups wanna come free. What's the, what's the ten thousand in the budget cover?
So...
Fireworks.
No, that's a, that's a, that's a separate ten thousand.
Right, right, so, um, got a guy coming down with a horse and carriage. It's five hundred dollar fee for him. Got a team of boxen coming over from, from Lee that are willing to come over. They'll pull whatever we want, whether an old ox cart.
Yeah.
Like I said, you know, this doctor's side, you wanna jump in an ox cart, we'll, we'll pull them. Um, I thought parade marshal should probably be in a nice carriage in the front, maybe. Um, I think Heidi should probably be a parade marshal, she might wanna pull Jimmy in his bathtub, I don't know, but... We'll, we'll cross that bridge, but if not, we can put somebody in a, in a carriage. Bands, cost money. New Hampshire State Police, pipe and drums. That's a fifteen hundred dollar fee. Bill Diamond, pfeif and drums, a thousand dollars, the Biscata Corp Rangers is a five hundred dollar, um... Shriners, so I had the Minnycats, they're excited to come down, it's a six hundred dollar fee. The Shrine of Clowns, another six hundred dollars. Yorkright Masons, probably get a hundred of them, come for nothing, they'll be a free, free charge. Naturally, fire trucks, not a fee. But, I mean, all these little things kinda add up. You know, we gotta have porta-potties. I've kinda tried to reach out to ME about how much it's gonna cost, right now with porta toilets. I mean, you've seen it on the news. They've skyrocketed in price, they're not available, they're... But, um, hopefully by next year, things will calm down and, and, um, things will get back more normal.
Is there anybody that, like, can be the parade event manager?
Well, I've kinda taken over that event.
Okay. It's, it's a pretty big deal, though, and, and rather than putting all of the burden on you, are there people out there who have done that before? Who can help, you know, kind of like manage the whole thing?
My son is willing to help me. He and I have both done parades before.
Okay, okay.
So hopefully, him and maybe some of his friends can jump in, and, and it, it takes a little bit of coordination. I mean, you gotta have people that march, typically you set up a parade in divisions.
Yeah.
Gotta have an announcer. So we need some kind of stage at one end. Personal feeling, I hate an announcement booth in the middle of a parade. Might have to. And the reason I, I don't like it, is because people always stop in front of the... Bandstand, or whatever you wanna call it, to perform for the dignitaries. So while they're performing, the rest of the parade has already moved ahead. Other people the other side are the same. Is that the parade? Is it over? So by having people with, in a perfect world... Lead guy with the first division, somebody on the radio, they've stopped the bandstand, stop the parade. When they're done performing, move the parade, so now it's, it stays together, there's not this thousand-foot gap between
Yeah.
different people. So important to have a set of walkie-talkies. Important to have people sign up. Important to have the lineup brought down to the announcer, so he can announce things correctly. Um, maybe a little bit of info about what's coming up, who did it, who helped. Any significant information they wanna share with us. So there should be a fairly large bi-amins group.
So how many, how many different groups, including bands, would you envision that there'd be?
I'd like to see maybe three divisions, maybe thirty different groups.
Spread across thirty groups, across the three divisions.
Anyways...
And does that include, like, the, the carts with the ox and, and fire trucks and all that, too?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we got riding stables in town, I mean, I, we need floats. So we need the townspeople to build floats.
Yeah, I was just trying to get, what's the scale of how long is the parade? Based on, like, how many groups is the parade itself a mile long?
It very well could be. I mean, we can chop that up, too, but, I mean, if we wanna do it, let's do it big. My thoughts is, if we close off that section of 152, we can double-line people. So we can have people on this side, there's people on this side, and when they start marching, we just snake them into one line.
We need, we need to spend some time with, well, public safety and highway, talking about a route, and, uh, and where we're gonna, where we're gonna put the crowds.
So, it's a little bit of an issue.
'Cause the crowd has to get here and park and view, and you want more than we can do that with here in the center of town, so... And we don't have to solve that tonight, but I think we gotta, we really need to drill down on that, that question, though.
Right. So how many people are gonna show? How many do we have for our Christmas parade?
I don't know, you, you're, you're talking about a very long route, so you're, you're theoretically encouraging viewers along that entire route. You don't wanna have a parade marching down the empty street.
Yeah, my, my counterargument to you would be, if you're only anticipating the number of people we have for the holiday parade, we shouldn't be spending the money on it.
I'm not anticipating it, but I'm just saying.
Not suggesting we solve all that, I'm just saying, let's, let's put a big fork in that one and come back to it.
Sure, sure.
And work on that, 'cause there's a lot of ways to do that.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of questions, so...
Yep. So...
Great, great, great program, we just gotta, we gotta really, really work on it.
I agree.
Yep.
So I was hoping, I mean, fun, wanted to work with emails for the time being. Any quality aerial maps available?
Printed?
Hmm.
Nothing current.
I mean, it doesn't need to be current.
Get somebody with a drone.
Just something that would identify parking spaces, parade route, alternative traffic routes.
Oh, we can do all that.
So we can just put it on a piece of paper saying, viewing area, park here, park here, park here, park here. And then logistics down the road, you need to give it to the public to tell them where we wanted to park, where we wanted to view from. I don't know.
I mean, just a question, just, I mean, it's gonna...
Go ahead.
But could you start the, I mean, have everybody set up for their things, even though it's a hill, but it's Camelot Court over here? And then they come down and they go, and then they go down to Flutter Street. And, because then you could have your parking over here, you could have parking on Flutter Street, you could have some parking here before it starts off, and then they could get off and, I mean, disperse them to Flutter Street.
Viewed a lot of different spots.
I mean, you wanna keep it central to town, I understand, that's the, the key, it's...
Well, not only that, this is probably the only viewing spot that we really got.
Right, I guess, I'm with you.
I mean, we've talked about maybe starting down at Francesca, and coming down, 'cause then you could line up the whole length of Francesca. I mean, it's a great lineup spot.
Same with Yarish, you do, you could line up...
But, you walk forever before you get anybody that could view it.
Right.
Yeah. But I think Chris is right, I think that this is a bigger conversation, that, you know, you have to have Iowa and Fall involved in.
Right, and I'd love you guys to be involved in it. I mean...
I like the idea.
Give you...
Yeah, I think a parade's a great idea.
Like a real parade.
Yeah.
Right, that's right. It happens once every...
Well, yeah, I don't think I...
If you're lucky, it happens once every twenty-five years, but let's face it, it's probably once every fifty years.
I think it's gonna be fifty, correct? Uh, thirteen.
August thirteenth, Saturday.
Two thousand twenty-two.
Where would the fireworks go, moving on?
So moving on to fireworks, um, I'm gonna get Atlas fireworks, um...
Where would you be displaying those?
General Manager's gonna come down, he's gonna, well... My first thought was, if we could see them from the school.
From where?
The school. So we'd have parking. And if we could shoot them, maybe from Fernwood Lumber, or maybe out back on the, on the soccer field? If it would be viewable enough. But he'll come down and look at that site, that was one site. Tyler talked about, um, Lee Speedway.
Speedway.
And people would view it from, like, Marston, if they wanted, or they could...
They could, I mean, I realize it's in Lee, but it's not, like, it's way out of town.
I just look at it as a place that everybody could park.
Yeah, yeah.
And there would be no, you know what I mean? They did it, they had fireworks this weekend over there, so...
So it'd be nice if we could have that. I mean, the other possibility, again, down to the town pits.
State park.
Don't know that, it'd be awesome if we could do it off the light, but I don't think the light people would probably...
Oh, absolutely, don't worry about that, I'm sure that's not bad. Wouldn't worry about that.
Let's jump ahead to the reenactment, the encampment.
So much for that. Uh, reenactment, so, talk to Bob before I came down here. Originally, I, I had this, put a fair amount of money in it, because I thought I was gonna have to pay the reenactors to be there. He's telling me that we won't have to pay the reenactors, because it's gonna be a sanctioned event. So sanctioned events, we don't pay the reenactors. However, we do have some costs. They need firewood. Hopefully, we can get that donated. They need water, lots of water. Hopefully, we can get some of that donated, either through Poland Springs, or Haniford's, or someplace. He talked like a water truck, but I think if we had pallets of water, it'd be sufficient. I know when we did Raymond's, 'cause I was involved in the Raymond, uh, celebration, Haniford donated us, God, I think it was three or four pallets of water. It had passed its sell date. Which is very short, so it's still perfectly usable water. They just can't resell it because of it's gone, you know? A week past its sell date. So, possibility. Somebody said Poland Springs, I'm gladly call them, see if they can donate water to us, maybe even bring a water truck down for the day, or for the weekend. They need hay.
What does the, what does the encampment look like, like, what does that event look like?
So the event will, again, happen at the square. So on both sides of the square, one in front of Romi's, one in front of the schoolhouse, we'll have Colonial on one side, set up in tents. Whole little village-type thing. British on the other side. They talked about in front of Romi's house, in the little grassy area right in front of his house, they have the settlers, which sell merchandise, set up there. Reenactment, although the battle will happen in Romi's field, looking down over the top, so some will be coming up, they'll defend from the top, and there might be numerous different scenarios. We talked about, they wanted to come down through one of the cornfields, down off of Ledge Farm. Catherine said she'd be happy to cut them a little path through and break through the wall, so that it would seem more authentic. Said they can just parade down the field and stage, but if they could come out of the woods like they would've. So she's happy to do that for us. So, come out into the field, they'll, they'll have their little reenactment, probably last maybe an hour. All done and said. I mean, they'll have muskets and cannons, and it'll be the real deal. Much like you would've seen Revolutionary War time. After it's all over, they'll go back to their camps, they'll, people can wander around and, and talk to them and discuss what life was like, and... They're very authenticated, and glad to talk to people.
So the, so it's a, it's a set up one day camp and then battle the next day, or it's all one day?
Typically set up on Friday nights. And then they'll camp Friday night, 'cause they wanna set up their camps.
Yep.
They'll have some fires, and they'll cook some food, and the local houses, if somebody wants them to come over, they'll, they'll actually go into the house and costume and have dinner with them. So then on Saturday, they'll open up the camps for the public. Show what time, probably around ten o'clock. Battle will happen at probably one o'clock, say, one to two, at two to three. And they'll probably have the camps open till probably four o'clock. All over Saturday. Sunday, it starts up again, they'll have another battle. After the battle, they'll come back and they'll probably tear it down, and they'll be...
So they camp up there for two nights?
Two nights. Yep.
Some kind of viewing areas, some kind of public...
So, viewing area, they said they didn't see any problems with people either viewing, depending on the location of the battle. Some of them could, we could rope off of...
You get the idea, is that there is one?
Oh, absolutely. So we can either view from the top, or there's enough room on the sideline that you can view from the side of the field.
So, big, big picture, we, we've gotta come back and talk about the logistics of moving how many, however many people
Again, right.
To and from that site.
Yep.
'Cause there's not parking there.
Right.
You don't have parking, the reenactors there.
So Trey Sleepy will open his field up for parking.
For the reenactors.
Actually, for public parking, too.
Oh, he is?
One of the big, one of the big pieces that we have up to figure out on something like that, and moving that number of people is probably the biggest there. And supporting that size crowd, right?
He can probably park probably a hundred cars in his field, if not more. We need some kids to help park, probably, so it stays orderly. Talked with Dave, who hazes field, and he was, he was alright with it, he'll just make sure it's cut before the event. And then they leave, he'll probably...
Can you talk about the down, down Ledge Farm on the right, that next field, is that where you were?
Yeah, next field, right next to...
Okay, well, anyway, that, and how many spectators would you envision each day?
Hard to tell.
So that's another, you know...
It's a crapshoot.
No, that's another big, big, let's come back and really drill down on that one.
Right. Right.
Yep.
And that's why I said if we, again, parking here, parking at the school, if we needed extra parking, I could probably have them pack over to Farnolds. So we could cover a lot of cars. We could pack a lot of cars.
I think too, Chris, we've got to look at it, look at the events as a whole, not just as individuals, because if you look at it across some of the bigger events, there's, there's parking issues, there's traffic control issues, there's police, and if we're having events that, you know, two events that are up in the square, then we want to kind of handle those the same, so that people know what to expect.
Right. The first one, you work the bugs out, and the second one, they know what to expect.
Well, no, you work out the bugs before you have it.
Well, I hope so too, but I'm just saying, if you, if you get a little hiccup, you've...
And do you have a, um, do you have a manager for that event of some sort yet? Have you got somebody to run, to run that in the moment?
Bob Davidson has taken the lead on that. He is the adjutant for the first Nehem's regiment.
I look at the transportation thing, and worst case scenario, if you went to even the, the bus company there in Northwood on...
Yep, Dale.
Said whatever, two buses, what's it cost for the buses, whatever it is, two bucks a person, jump on the bus, I'd rather jump on the bus than try to find a parking place up there.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's what I mean, it's gonna all be all consistent, right?
Yes, you gotta...
Yeah, you gotta make sure that things are categorized, and it starts at one o'clock exactly, and it's two-thirty, so everybody knows that the bus is gonna run from this time, that's it.
I think that, that would help too with the, I mean, as far as the details and stuff.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Cars everywhere, and worried about somebody, you know.
I mean, they're...
Gonna be very regimented.
Pay a dollar or something.
Two bucks.
Right.
That's the funniest thing you ever said, John.
Yeah, probably. Probably gonna be the best thing I'm gonna do tonight.
All right, town picnic.
So, I've had a few different thoughts of town picnic. I really had talked to, oh, who's that girl that used to be in charge of Department of Dread, I think she's now since gone, but if we could get the park to open up, I don't want to do it during their season, naturally, but after Labor Day, when they shut down all but for fall camping, go down there, have a town picnic?
Talk about Tara. Tara, Tara?
Yeah, Tara, she's kind of moved on now to a different position.
Yep.
So, but I understand the manager over there is very...
That should be within reach.
Hmm?
That should be within reach, that, that post-season, but before they really shut down?
Right, right.
That should be within reach.
So, you know, go down there, even if we just do hamburgs and hot dogs, I mean, I like to do something a little nicer, like chickens, have a chicken barbecue or something. But, it can be as simple as hamburgs, hot dogs, some sides, macaroni salad, potato salad, whatever. Maybe have somebody from the park come down and give a talk of why they chose Pawtucket to build the state park, what logistics did they encounter, uh, you know, just talk about the creation of the park, and, and why was Nottingham chosen as whatever number state park it is.
There's great stories about the park.
There is great stories.
There was a guy whose last name was Goodrich, and he was the Barefoot Farmer.
Barefoot Farmer.
Yeah.
George.
They're gonna, um, the library's doing, um, gonna do a couple of community-wide reads, one where the people in the whole town read the same book, and, um, ones are geared for adults, and the other one is geared more for families, and they're gonna, Dan, um, is gonna run it, Dan Bunker, and he's gonna do the Barefoot Farmer as his book.
Nice.
And then do a hike afterwards.
Well, yeah, we were kind of encouraging them, they want to set up a story block, where they have the book as you walk, and we're sort of encouraging them to do it over in the park.
Yeah.
So that, sort of in his area, but yeah, he was quite the character, there's lots of stories about him, yeah.
But at the same time, why not get the lake people to bring their pontoon boats out?
Yeah, that was our other thought.
And give lake tours? Let's load them up?
Second.
Showcase the lake?
We're not coming up on that.
You can come up. So I think there's enough, enough people on the lake that would love to do that? I can't speak for everybody, but, I mean, why not, I mean, that would be one way to showcase Pawtucket Lake.
Well, we got one guy, he, he did volunteer to give kayak, people could jump on his kayak with him.
Nice.
Which is behind you.
Hopefully, he takes it out of the tree?
You gotta be careful with him, he could go, you know...
I'll take him over to the dam.
Exactly, I'm sure I was headed there.
I hear it's running quite well right now.
Quite well.
Right, it's the highest the lake's been in a long time.
Yes. But I, I look at too, I mean, the, the day of that picnic, I mean, if it could all happen, that could be one of the biggest events of the whole celebration.
The parade, the parade and the picnic.
Yeah, with plenty of parking, right, and I mean, you know, yeah.
I mean, I thought it'd be a great event, but...
And everything else on here is just kind of like the, the normal things that are done anyway, right?
Yeah, for the most part, I mean, I originally talked about cemetery tour, but I don't know that that's gonna happen.
Uh, the Historical Society talked a little bit about that, and they seemed to have some interest.
Okay.
Tina Cook, um, had some thoughts about that.
I mean, how cool would it be?
She was kind of thinking of getting one of the families, have their kids kind of dress up, and, you know, and...
Come out and talk about their families, do it around Halloween time?
Oh, I think she's gonna jump on and scare the kids.
Right, maybe we do it as a funeral procession.
You know, I went to one of those on Halloween night in a big old cemetery in Savannah, Georgia. It was so cool.
So why not?
Well, let's see, because somebody has to do it, that's why.
It is a problem with logistics.
Yep.
I, I'm a little disappointed that more townspeople haven't jumped up and said, how can we help? Volunteerism is tough.
Uh-huh.
And I know probably more than most people, because I run a lot of different organizations, getting people to help me is tough, and I do a lot by myself. I do a lot of begging, I do a lot of prodding, I don't mind begging for help, I don't mind begging people to donate, but I hate going back to the same ones numerous, numerous, numerous times, so that when they see me coming, it's like, ah, what's he want this time?
Does Joe have the, um, Farm Day on there?
So he doesn't, so...
That's what I was looking for.
Talking to young John Farnold, they want to open up the dairy farm. Um, not quite sure what he wants to do yet, um, I know one of his buddies, um, through FAA had got together a shingle mill, and they made a stamp. So their thoughts were, cut shingles, and then brand them with this stamp they made. Hostile event never happened, because of reasons beyond their control. He saw, and maybe you guys want to make a stamp of your own, I said, why do we want to make a stamp of our own, you already did one. Give it to the future farmers of America, raise some money for them. So, you know, have a shingle mill there, stamp some shingles, open the dairy farm. Said he could do a tractor pull if we really wanted, could put together a tractor pull probably overnight, he always run the one at their field fair. Uh, cross pull, I don't think, I don't know if either one of them will be within his constraints to do. Um, the other thing he talked about was maybe crazy vegetable. We all know we have these vegetable gardens with this, vegetables get out of control, and you have a string bean that's a foot and a half long, or a zucchini that's, uh, can't fit in the back of your car, so why not let these things grow wild, and have a little contest of who can grow the craziest overgrown vegetable? Said they did it, um, another event that he did, he thought it went over fairly well, but, uh, yeah, so he's got a few ideas, what he wants to do for a Farm Day, again, highlight, um, our farming background. I thought it'd be awesome if we get a drone over and, you know, catch them while they're working their fields, planting corn, harvesting corn, cutting hay, um, and be able to show that to people. Just another great aspect that would be awesome to do, unfortunately, when we talk this, my arm doesn't quite stretch that far, but, uh, all great stuff, I mean, there's a ton of things we can do, if we can get people excited and grab little pieces of this and run with it. Unfortunately, our committee is, is small in numbers.
You have a, a point in mind at which you stop with the daydreaming and the whatevs, and you say, this is our list, period, and we're gonna...
This is kind of our list here.
This is it.
So it doesn't matter what, what the Farm Day's gonna be, if it's not on the list today, then...
If he runs with it, he runs with it.
At, at some point, you know that you need to...
Right.
Need to switch roles and...
Not, not under my budget, so there's no budget associated with that whatsoever.
It's not just the money, it's the...
Well, just, it's a little bit.
Your bandwidth, you know, at some point, we have to worry about how much you can do.
Yeah, oh, that's why I'm not doing anything. Well, I say I'm not doing anything, I'll still be doing...
Yeah, uh, that would be wrong. It seems to me like we can take this list, and we can separate it into two columns, essentially, there's the column that's all the stuff that happens anyway.
Right.
Right, that's, you know, tried and true, and we know that's gonna happen, then there's some real anchor events that need more discussion and detailed planning, because they're gonna impact, you know, police, fire, I know Jay says no, but we have to think it through.
Oh, he has to be involved in it.
And, and parking, and facilities, and all of that, so, to me, that's kind of like the next step, is looking at those major events, and then really starting to...
Right, we need DPW to be involved.
Yeah.
I mean, what do they got for signage, what do they got for cones, what do we can...
Exactly.
Call on them for...
Exactly, yep.
I know the DOT has digital signs, that just needs somebody that has a little bit of pull, that can, that's what we get about them. They kind of told me no, but I'm a private citizen, as a town representative, but still...
You can run some, once a couple hundred votes.
Yeah. I know, I'm, I'm, I'm with you.
Seriously, you're, you're...
I know.
You're gonna need more guys than this is getting closer to culture.
And I realize that, and that's...
So then, the other thing is that, um, if we look at your budget, which, by the way, thank you for putting this packet together, it looks like the budget comes up to about seventy, seventy thousand.
Right.
Right, and the fund, well, we put, it had forty-one last year, we put another five in this year, so it's at forty-six.
Plus what we've put in.
And how much have you raised?
I think it's over ten thousand dollars now.
Is it, okay, so, so we're...
And then with our program book, we're hoping to raise another fair amount of money.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Okay, so we're, we're looking at probably about fifty to sixty somewhere, sixty?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so, I mean, it's pretty close.
Right, right, and through our fundraising efforts, we're hoping to be maybe close to the eighty, or maybe even a hundred thousand by the time the end of the year rolls around, with any luck.
Yeah, I mean, the problem with that is that, like Chris said, at some point, you've got to say, this is what we've got for money, and this is what we can, can plan, like, just because you have an extra ten thousand, you can't throw in something at the last minute.
Right. Totally get that? Go ahead.
Anything else you wanted to add?
I thought you were gonna add something.
No, we pretty much got the gist of everything, Lieutenant, I had laid it out pretty good of what, what we should be looking at.
Yeah, you know, we talked about, what else did I have here, anything? Encampments, the other thing that we talked, or I talked to Lori about, in another fundraising, commemorative license plates. So the DOT will let us, for one year, put a commemorative plate on the front of your car, they're printed by the state prison. I think the last time I did it, I did it over in Raymond, I think it cost us ten dollars, we sold it for twenty, doubled our money.
So for anybody registering their car in that one-year period, can get one of those?
Can't, put them on, you can issue them earlier, but you can't put them on until January one.
Oh.
So they need a picture-ready logo for it.
What happens on the following January one?
Have to take them off. Now you can display them on your wallet home, or in your garage, or wherever you want to display them.
Lee had it too, didn't he?
Yeah. Yeah, most towns do, a lot of towns do that.
Oh.
And so just a matter of coming up with a logo to put on it? Say Nottingham, and the dates.
Town seal.
Yeah, town seal, maybe imposed over the town map. Get the town map, and then the seal right in the middle of it? I don't know.
I like that idea.
Is there a minimum you have to order, or how's it work?
She didn't get the particulars, but...
Well, I think this has been helpful.
Yes, very.
Thank you.
And I would say too, I mean, now, the, the group, like you said, they are small, but they've done an awful, put an awful lot of time in themselves, and they're, they're just wanting something that everybody can be happy about, you know?
Yep.
Yeah, like I say, I want people to say, how do I help? Don't put obstacles in front of me. There are obstacles, let me help you get around them, over them, around them, whatever we're gonna do. Be part of the solution, not part of the problem.
Couple hundred bucks, we all set.
We're all here to serve our fellow man. We were elected to serve, I volunteered to serve, and what else can I say?
Good.
Town spoken, they want to celebrate, let's celebrate. I wish I had more for tonight.
Well, thank you, Steve.
Last twenty-one days, I've had four days that I haven't been in a meeting.
I accidentally...
But, that's my own doing, nobody else's.
Okay. Well, thank you, Steve, thank you, Roger.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, outhouse races?
Now we're all worn out, Steve.
outhouse races here in town?
Do you want to be able to do any more work?
What? outhouse races here in town?
It's a method of entertainment.
It is a method of entertainment. So I do it in Raymond every year, for the town fair. Have people build outhouses, push them down the street, put riders in them, I put toilets at the end of the, cover them with chocolate sauce, it's only polite to wipe the seat off after you've used it.
Are we all set? Did we have anything else?
Yeah, yeah, do we have, do we, I don't have any more.
We have anything for non-public?
I don't think we do.
We don't have anything for non-public, do you?
I, I don't have any for you.
Okay, all right, uh, let's...
I'll make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
Motion, uh, in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Nottingham, good night.